I think we're just missing chambers. It's not, but you see, I think, should I send you to?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, May 2nd, regular meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. We have quorum, so can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chambers?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
De Senzo? Milliken?
Here.
Patelko?
Here.
And Swan?
Here.
Great, thank you. We received an agenda in our packets. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, thanks. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Patelko, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Curtis, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We also received a copy of the minutes from our regular meeting on March 7th. Any questions, comments, edits? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Curtis, is there s-
Second.
Second by Swan, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great. Any communications and announcements?
No, no, none.
Okay, and there's no public hearings, just a reminder, there will be an opportunity later on in the agenda for public comments on non-agenda items, so if you're in the audience or watching online, we will have that opportunity later in the agenda, and just for those watching online, you'll have an opportunity to call in, and that number is 888-382-9556, and we'll remind you of that at the time. So moving forward, we've got a few discussion items, so we'll turn it over to staff for item number one.
Thank you, Chair Milliken. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. So today, what would have been at our last meeting, staff has put together some training material for the planning commission, and thinking about what to put together, you know, as you know currently, as we move the ordinance out of Appendix A into Chapter 50, we've got two zoning codes. And generally, the way, you know, day-to-day understanding for staff, Chapter 50 has all of our form regulations. Most of our, what I'll lean into further on to the term Euclidean zoning in Appendix A. But with the recent changes, last October, you know, a lot of the form-based standards, they're solidified. There's not a new zone being created, they've been in place for a few years, so. Form-based code is a, it's definitely different than most standard Euclidean zoning, and it, when you first started, it could be different enough, so I thought this would be a good thing to walk through. I compare it to more, more steps, not more complicated, and the directions within the ordinance, and this walkthrough in some project history, I'm hoping to highlight that. Or for the planning commission yourselves, or any citizens, you know, if you're doing a project, or you have a special use permit coming in front of you, you want to make sure you're as best versed in the standards of the form-based code. This is an attempt to give that walkthrough, or, you know, something you can go back to. So let's start with, what is form-based code? Outside of the planning world, it's probably something you don't know. To put it in a simple description, I often say, form-based cares less how you use the property, instead of residential, commercial, industrial, it does care. But more of the standards are focused on the form of the structure, and that form, as it relates to the public space, being the street or the properties around it. Which you can imagine, you start to think already, how does a code do that? So that's an attempt here. But also, you have your official definition, so AICP publishes something called the Planner's Dictionary. The definition's a little old, but I thought it would be a good middle ground, so. What is form-based code? According to AICP Dictionary, it allows market demands to determine the mixes, mix of uses within the building type, set by the community. The community establishes zones and building types, and allows building owners to determine the uses. The look and layout of a street is carefully controlled to reflect neighborhood scale, parking standards, pedestrian accessibility. But building owners and occupants are allowed the maximum flexibility to determine how the buildings will be used. You'll notice the term "flexibility" used by the owner. Obviously, it's a code and a standard, isn't whatever you want to do, but in a sense of working in the city's codes for 11 years, there are definitely much more flexibility in a form standard than, say, a residential or strictly commercial. And the image on the right there is a page from the city's street design manual. That is a document, I encourage people, when you're referencing your project, not a bad idea to at least have that handy or nowhere to find it. What the street design manual does, it takes every street in the city and puts it into a different classification. So you could have, I might not be using the exact terms, but like, an event center or a priority downtown street, think of your Kalamazoo Mall, or, you know, streets that are facing Bronson Park. Those have a different classification than just like residential. The vast majority of the streets in the city are just residential streets, and, you know, the, it's pretty dry on what you need to do for it, but obviously, the, the street design for streets downtown, or, you know, on the Kalamazoo Mall, wider sidewalks, street trees are specified in there. So that's, you know, how that linkage happens, and as we go through this, you can see the street design manual, how it really complements that, and how we keep coming back to the zoning just not ending at the property line. There really is a holistic approach. Now, that term Euclidean, it's based off of a suburb of Ohio, where there was a Supreme Court action that allowed cities to be able to regulate zoning. It was one of those actions, so traditional, I'll call it, for the sake of keeping outside of the industry talk, and form-based coding, zoning. So the image on the left, I think most people understand, if I'm building a house, I've probably got to put it somewhere on the lot, so far from the lot. I can probably build it so tall, and I probably can't pave the whole yard, so there's some coverage. That's going to cover the vast majority of the base Euclidean standards, that doesn't include parking, landscaping. We're not getting into that for today. Where the one on the right kind of shows the, we're looking in three-dimensional now, so you've got the building form, and I took a couple cutouts, and it kind of highlights that, you know, you're, if you're used to your traditional zoning, and then you go to the form-based code, you might be pumping the brakes a little bit. So to kind of dial in, and a reminder on what is form-based code in the city of Kalamazoo, there on the left, I have, if you pull up your zoning map, and it says, any of those, neighborhood node, which are your nodes, think of your Millwood at Cork and Portage, or Parkview and Oakland. Downtown 1, 2, and 3, that's the former CCBD zone, the whole downtown is D 1 through 3, 1 being the most intensive, and the donut goes out to, you know, less intense on the, on the edges, and live-work 1 and 2. And as an example, I have here on the left is the zoning map prior to the creation of any form-based codes, and the right is the zoning map today. And to visualize these changes, if, if, if people are familiar with Portage Road around the Cork Street intersection, you'll notice on the zoning map, we've got all sorts of different zones. You've got CC, CO, that is broad commercial, office commercial. Live-work 1, light, not intensive commercial, single-family, all to the east, more multifamily, so it's trying to, if you think of that area, you could drive down Portage Road and see house, business, store, big commercial. You can imagine how those colors on the map put those strict Euclidean standards. Where now, that stretch is live-work, where you see commercial, residential. In some portions, particularly north of Cork Street, is all the live-work, and that hashed color is a node, where Harding's Market and all of that is. So now, we can understand the geography, if you will, of generally where you will find live-work. You're not going to find live-work zone at Pasadena and southern, because it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Of all single-family houses, it's a existing land type. And then at the bottom, I just put the, the colors you would see on the map, for anyone looking, they can correlate it. Something I do want to touch base on in this, I'm going to do two examples, a commercial example and a residential example. What will not be dived into is these form-based codes on existing structures. Because when you look at the form-based codes, I need two entrances and so much window space on my road front. But let's say I bought my retail building, and I'm changing it from a shoe shop to a t-shirt shop, there's not much going on. When you go to the non-conforming, non-conforming is the zoning term for what's already there, what people call grandfathered. So the, the standards basically say, if you're not increasing the intensity, adding to this level, which is usually 50%, so if you were doubling the occupancy or doubling the floorplan of the building, then we would have to look at those full standards. So there's a lot of, a lot of the live-work zones are built out, previously been built out, and that's designed to recognize minor projects, and what the, the form standards require, that you're not, if someone wasn't looking to put on a door for a minor project because of zoning, you know, it doesn't happen. So there's, there's a broad section about that, and it spells out non-conforming uses, non-conformities, and the non-conforming site characteristics. So if someone came, they had everything met the code except for two doors, and they weren't changing anything, I'd go, you're right, that is correct, but you got to go to the non-conformities, you don't got to worry about that. And then here is, just as another reminder, is, on the, the left is the future land use map, which was adopted in 2018, and on the right is the current zoning. Some color preferences changed, but you can really see how our zoning map has really started to evolve, or not even evolve, it is now at the point, very closely to what was imagined through our master plan. So I wanted to be able to tell that story of, you know, how, where did these form-based codes come from, and why? So just as a brief, quick thing, I figured, for Euclidean zoning, someone comes to the counter, I want to put a house, I've got a square lot, what are my standards? That conversation would look a lot like this. We'd have a drawing, I'd let them know their setbacks, let them know where their driveway could be, about how big, and the rest is up to them. That's, again, that, that Euclidean zoning, this is what has dominated City of Kalamazoo zoning for decades, still is a major part of it. And I think that's important, none of the Euclidean zoning standards go away. But now, between the two ordinances, you're kind of in a lane, one or the other, form-based or not. And then once all of Appendix A is there, you're, it's already tied together, and, you know, the, the code puts you where you need to go. That might sound a little silly, but as we go through, you'll, I think that'll be shown. So all of that, form-based code, different colors, what does all this mean? So, the, the tough part is, I can't give you a direct answer like that house on the Euclidean zoning. The process to determine the standards is the same, regardless of use, but if you're in a form-based code, doesn't matter if it's you're building a factory or a house, you can follow the same steps. And we're going to start with, this is just a completely hypothetical parcel over here on Rose Street, Zone D 3. And I want to open up some sort of just retail shop. So in the very, the very first chapter, Chapter 0 in the zoning ordinance, is, and you don't have to, I did provide a printed copy, because you do, you do kind of bounce around to get to your answer. It isn't a 1 or 2 section, it's 4 to 6. So right there is how to use these regulations, and then you'll want your zoning ordinance, and kind of on back up, your street design manual, and who knows, there might be some regulation in Appendix A you have to go to. Today, obviously, it isn't everybody, we have print options for this, but the, the vast majority of people working with our ordinances are working on all the online ones, so often, these are all able to be found on our websites, or if you have any trouble, you know, staff's available to help anyone. So the very first step in there is, what zoning district is your property located in? Sounds simple enough, but you'd be surprised how many projects, they get pretty far before they figure out what zoning it is. So if you're form-based or not, you need to know that, and the next question is, what street type is your property located? So already, you got your book, you can nail that down. So, this one is D 3, and I, I don't dive much into the, the road, I, I didn't write down what the road is, I think it's a priority main street, but for sake of argument, let's say I know that really well. Do as I say, not as I do. Permitted, so then number 2, permitted use, what is your desired use? My hair is getting a little long, so I'm going to just say I want to open up a barber shop. And then, is it permitted in this location? Then it says, refer to Table 4.1-1. When you see the first number, that's your chapter, and see what uses are permitted. Many uses have specific design standards by district. These are described in 54-4. That's going to follow immediately, if you were, open up the code, that's going to be what follows this table that you see in front of you. So, okay, I know I want to do a barber shop, I'm going to build a new one on Rose Street. So I hit this, use of categories, our previous, or the Appendix A use table is like 8 or 9 pages long, and this is a good example of how we work to condense or simplify the ordinance. General retailer services, of that list, I'm going to guess a haircut is in there, or a barber shop, or beauty salon. So when you go to that table of uses, that 4.4-1, okay, I know I'm general services. And then when you get to general services, well, first I should say, there's 3 options in that table, and the bottom of the table describes what these are. If it's P, it's permitted. You don't need to go to 4.41, because there's no design standards. If it says PD, it's permitted, but you need to then go into those design standards to see what it says. There's not a design standard in my example, but a recent one did come up. You'll remember, when we were going through the ordinance changes, loose material storage was an item of discussion. And I was contacted by a contractor that wanted to move, like, their specialized construction business office to a location on a road on the edge of town, and they would have outdoor staging of their construction trucks or some building material. And when you go to the paid development standards, it says that use is allowed, it says PD, but is not allowed on the street types. And when you go to those street types, they're only downtown. But the road it was on, way on the edge of town, wasn't classified. And you can kind of put together, yes, a construction yard management makes a lot of sense in the CC 2 zone, but probably doesn't in an area of town like this. But out on the periphery, where it was a large lot, a lot of commuter-based uses, makes a lot of sense, so it was kind of going through, so yes, it is permitted, and the development standards, sounds good, you know, just make sure you meet these. Or a development standard might say, if it was downtown, no single-story buildings permitted. So, but this one's nice and easy. I want to do a, my barber shop, I can do it in the D 2 zone. I've got my street type. Okay, what's next? So, item 3, what are the requirements for developing or rehabbing at this location? The standards for each district are noted in one of 2 tables. The lots permitted by district, these are the standards for form-based district, and are regulated by lot type. We've got another term here, lot type, that's always going to be in your form-based codes. In most, in most districts, more than one lot type is permitted. What that's saying, and the lot type is, what does this building look like? And sometimes we'll call it the choose-your-own-adventure, so you could, the standards change with each lot type, so you don't have just one range of options, depending on what you're doing, and you can pick any lot type. Each lot type has its own specific standards to that lot type, which we will see as we go on. So, select your lot type for your project, and use those standards to design your project. That last sentence is, is telling us exactly what we need to do. Lot type, got to figure out my project. Okay, let's talk about that. So, within that section, as you get into Chapter 6, and you got to figure out these lot types, think of it as now you're building your form, to figure out what your setbacks are. And those specified are, on the right there is the language right from the zoning ordinance, giving a, a description of what they are, and I think that does an excellent job of helping someone guide. And I, I'll pick an example for here that we'll use. So you have commercial, flex, cottage commercial, civic, warehouse, yard attached, yard detached, and outdoor market. So depending on, if you're in a live-work zone, and you want to build a house, you're probably going to use a yard attached. If you really want to, though, you could do a commercial and make it a house, that use doesn't care, but if you want your yard and all of that, you're going to have bigger setbacks in yard. Where if you're building a store, the commercial's going to allow higher impervious coverage, but it's going to want that structure to look like a store, to have the building near the street, to make sure that the pedestrian is brought into the design, kind of all, you know, you're not just planning for your automobile customers or users. So each of those, I, I won't go through and read each one, but each, the commercial is, that's going to steer you towards a very commercial-looking building. You can think of a lot of 1 and 2-story buildings you see around town. It won't look like, say, a, on the edge of town, by the freeway, restaurant in the middle of a parking lot. It, you won't get to that in those form standards. But also, areas where that's appropriate are not zoned for form-based standards. So commercial looks at commercial, flex, think of that as mixed use. It could be a building that's probably got residential and commercial, or light industrial residential. It could be more than one use. Again, the traditional zoning was very strict on. You can use it for this type of commercial, and that's it. Civic, that is, you know, more of public buildings. A recent civic building, I believe, that the Boys and Girl Club opted for that one. City Hall could be a civic. So you're going to design a building, you won't need more windows, but it would have to, you know, have some architectural significance. Cottage commercial, think of that as more of a, a light commercial space. As you go down Berdick, you start to blend into a more residential use, or you see what some houses that look like they put a little storefront on there. It's probably, looks more like a residence, but, you know, it's designed to allow areas for parking and things like that. So cottage commercial, think of it as mixed use, but more homey. And warehouse is an industrial one, so if you have a form-based, and you're in live-work 2, and it's an industrial area, the, you're not going to have a lot of clearance for windows, doors, high coverage, it's, it's going to allow you flexibility to build a warehouse. Yard attached, that would look more like a, a house. Yard detached, sorry, I mixed those up. Yard attached would be duplexes to 8 or more, whatever, units, row houses. Yard detached would be a single-family home. Or at least, you could easily design one that looks like every other one with those standards. Or outdoor market, think of your gas stations, your farmer's market-type buildings, or more outdoor market. Specific standards for those types of uses, which is one of the more recent ones, because you can imagine having a little pavilion without walls is really hard to get to in those other ones, so that's where outdoor market comes in. So, all of that, there's, now we have a little bit of idea what a lot type is. So I know I'm building a store, and I'm in the D 2 zone. So I've got, my options are D 2, and wherever it says P is permitted, blank means it's not allowed. So I can either build a commerce, a flex, or a civic use. And let's say I'm going to, I'm going to go with flex, that's what I do in my example. Great, so I've gotten far enough, I know what a lot type is, and I know I can do one that looks like a store. And this is where then now you're able to really start to put it together. There's a lot that you look at, but once you do it, it starts to make sense. So I'll walk through each one. And you'll notice, I have a picture afterwards, you'll see those images on the bottom. Every item in this list has a number in the picture, so not only do you have these defined, but you have the pictures to help clarify. And just as a moment there, I'll stop there if there's any questions before I go on. All right, so, multiple principal buildings. So I can have more than one building, it says yes. Front lot line coverage limit. What that is saying is, how much of the front lot line, your property along the road, has to be occupied by structure? And your structure is determined by a build-to zone. So if I've got a 100-foot lot, my building has to be at least 70 feet wide up front. Okay, so now I know I'm pushing up towards the front and covering that much. Occupation of corner, that's where, you know, those build-to zones at the corner, if a property has an occupation to corner, that's where we want that corner piece to be filled in by building or defined enclosed entry to the, to the property. Front build-to zone, so this turns into our setback. A setback is, you shall be 10 feet back. A build-to zone says 0 to 10, so I can be at the line or back 10 feet. Okay. Corner build-to zone, the corner build-to is your side street. Our old code didn't really define well what a side is when it's a road. That item is addressed, so I, okay, I can do 0 to 10 on the side where there's a road. I've got a great banner, and I want to go up to the front, I can encroach in the right of way, because it's allowed. So think of your awnings or signs, when you get downtown, stuff tends to get over the road. But you probably don't want stuff over the road all over town. So that's why that one's in there. And moving on, then we see side yard setback, zero. Okay, I don't have any side setback. And the rear yard setback is zero, um, and zero if I'm off of an alley. But you'll notice it's ten feet if it's next to a residential district. So now the code's recognizing, yeah, you got this commercial use and you can do everything you want there, but now there's houses, put, you gotta leave some room to put up some buffer. And semi-impervious coverage, um, that is something that isn't roof, concrete, asphalt. So if you got a gravel you wanna put out there, um, or some rocky landscaping, that's covered. So I can cover seventy to eighty-five percent of my property, and if I really need to, I can cover the rest in gravel. And keep in mind, those are just what you can go to, you don't have to. Um, parking location, rear yard, nice and simple, okay? So I can't be in the front. Um, loading and service location, so when I, I probably wouldn't have a loading bay, but if I did, rear or side, corner side. And keep in mind, we're in D three, we're downtown. You'll notice it's putting everything, um, vehicle or auto service in the side or the back. Um, let's see, driveway location, off of the alley. Uh, one on the corner side if you're on a corner, or, uh, I can't read that from here. One on front if an interior lot, not located in D one. So what that's saying is, if you're in the middle of a lot, you can have one entrance, obviously, 'cause you can't get to that rear yard without it. But if it's on a corner, the code's really steering you to put an approach on the side road. 'Cause you could think, if we want that building up front and we need that seventy percent coverage, obviously you got thirty percent to access or do whatever you want with. These are the examples of how the, the code lines up with the future land use as you start to dive into it. And then going on, so height, um, one story, but then you see two-story minimum in D two or D three. Ah, I'm in D three, so now I need to do a two-story building. So I know either I gotta expand my use upstairs, or you know what? Maybe I want to venture and start some rentals and put that into my business plan. Okay, I gotta do two stories, I know that now. Um, maximum height, three stories in live-work two. Um, on a main street commercial or neighborhood business street type, up to five stories. Um, in D one or D two, no maximum height. Now you can see that D zoning, the height is guided now. You really gotta get into your lot type, 'cause it's specifying these, this very important information. And then ground floor, what this is, what is the height of the floor? When you're standing there from the street, what is the, the height of the floor? And then that specifies twelve to twenty-four feet, upper floors nine to fourteen feet. So you've got a range. Okay, that sounds si- simple enough, I'll have my architect figure that out. Um, ground floor uses, so all uses are permitted in the district. Okay, that's simple, don't need to worry about that. Um, occupied space restriction, yes. Except for residential lodging, which is permitted. What the occupied space is, when you go to the definition, it's the first fifteen feet of the street facing. It's basically saying that that space can't be used for storage, a closet. It, it should be part of the space, so that someone doesn't have this open space and you're looking at their merchandise being stocked. That's what that is. Some form bases, codes don't care if you have an occupied space, but these street-heavy presence ones do. Accessory uses and structures, that just steers you back to the accessory structures. I don't need a garage or a shed, so I'm not worried about it. And moving on, then we get to street-facing facades. So what the facade is, um, you'll notice in this one it says per entrance type. So there's different entrance types, stoop, um, civic, arcade. So that, when you go, where do I put my entrances and all of that? It either doesn't care, or it gives you these options which steer it. In a sense, the code steers you to create an entrance feature. So like, um, the, a commercial one would probably say a door, you know, complemented by windows that look into it. It's, it's broad, but kind of nudges you in a direction. And then when you do need to figure out, so you pick an entry type, and then that tells you, here's, you know, how the, the door should look. And then, uh, upper floors, in this zone, per entrance type, street-facing facade. So what that's saying is, um, you need at least twenty percent transparency. In the, um, entrance type, it talks about the transparency and the windows related to the door. So when you go upstairs, it's saying, hey, you need seventy percent of windows on the ground floor. You don't need that upstairs. Um, so at least twenty percent is what it looks for. And that is, you take a band of that building, and if it's eight feet tall and seventy feet wide, whatever twenty percent is, has to be your window. Um, the, the entrance, the location, has to be on the front facade or the building corner. So that entry type that it talks about, now you're saying, oh, now, okay, my entrance at least has to be facing the road. I know that, great, it's where I want my customers to be. Um, entrance treatment, and then that's when you go to the entrance types, storefront and stoop. So there's about five, maybe six entrance types. Those are the two you can pick from. And, um, then the number that you need, uh, like how many entrances do we need? The, uh, there's gonna be a variance in front of the ZBA next week that covers this topic. Um, so what it says is, one for every sixty feet of building frontage. So my building's seventy feet wide, I need one. If my building was a hundred and fifty feet wide, seventy times two is one forty, so I would need two entrances. So that's the way to, you know, create that pedestrian, connect to the street. Um, and these standards are probably not gonna come up at Cork Road and Sprinkle Road, but they, you know, do come up when you're three blocks from the main intersection in town, where everything is really people-focused already. And then, um, moving on, other facade entrances, yes. It could be yes or no. What that's saying is, you can have all the entrances you want everywhere else. We just need one per this entrance type there. And the other option could be no, then I guess the answer's no. And, um, then for the roof type, um, a tower, that's just a feature that is defined. So if your tower was a little out of the height, okay, I can do what the tower says. That's gonna be a very niche thing, I think, for most people. And then spire, not permitted. Again, the spire and the tower are architectural features that you often see. Think of the park club next door. So if someone wanted to build and complement what's an existing feature, you're not running into, oh, that spire would work really good on this building, but I'm at three stories. You know, your, your relief is gonna be in there. And as I said, you know, I, I know that's a heavy loaded information, you're kinda going through this, this dry thing. But as you do it, there's a big circled number next to it, and on top of the definition, you can look and see it. So you can see the corner occupancy, you can see the build-two zone. Eleven shows you the parking in the back. And so what I would be doing, um, I didn't, but maybe it'll be helpful, I would've been kind of laying out my outline of what my project could look like. And we're entering that Z-axis, we're going in the third dimension, we're in the building. And you can see as I went through the windows and the doors and the entry type, so like when I talk about the twenty percent upstairs, the, the twenty-one's up there. So I go, oh, they're talking about up there, I don't need to figure it out down here. And this is, I wanna remind, the form-based codes have been in the city for five years. So staff, citizens, and the development community, you know, this has been absorbed. And what does that look like, or hey, how could I, if I'm a citizen and I wanna look at a site plan? I, I didn't follow all that. So I have here some examples of projects in the form-based codes that have been provided by local design professionals and their own navigation and interpretation of it. And this was one, um, that did that, and I thought was a great example. So that's a, a commercial building in the flex zone, at that entire table spelled out. And you'll see they have, they put in allowable percentage, and then the actual. So pretty quickly you can go and check. Um, so even if someone was developing it for themselves, if you can copy that, you're gonna be able to, to put it together. And the one on the right is a form-based residential one. The residential is a lighter, lighter tackle, if you will. So you could see there's, there's less to look at than a, a commercial store. Um, I'll, I'll stop again there because, um, having different firms and different applicants be able to create different tables, um, it was, it was just showing how it was able to be done. Or even when we've had single-family homes, it's navigated, and you'll notice on that one, they, they went with the cottage commercial lot type instead of the yard detached. So, you know, that flexibility exists, whether there was a window or door treatment there, I don't know. But that was one where the developer went through the code, figured out what they wanted, and, and turned it in. Um, and then my, I'll do a pause for questions, and then I'm gonna do the same thing, but just for a residential project. All right? So I used, uh, as an example, that, um, twelve sixteen Park Street, which was rezoned by this body earlier this year. Um, let's say I'm gonna build a house there. It's zoned live-work one, and I need to remember, oh yeah, I gotta go back to those directions. What's my zone, live-work one? Okay, I wanna do a house. And it's one unit, I think. So then you go back to the use table, and you see the, the, the zones specified up there. And I see, hmm, residential, residential one and two unit, live-work one, P. Oh, I don't have any design standards, I'm just ready to go, I know my zone. And you'll see the PD, those you could go to, and it's again, gonna have some extra steps that you would incorporate by the time you move along to my lot type. So I'm in the live-work one, and I wanna build a house, what lot types do they allow there? Oh, it's everything except a warehouse and commercial. Great, uh, but I'm going to go with the yard detached. Sounds nice and simple, I want my house to look in, look like a house. So it's permitted. Okay. So now I go back to that section and I go to lot type detached. And it's gonna be the exact same process. Multiple principal buildings, yes. And think of that from the form-based standards. Notice it said one house, but if you have a lot big enough to meet the standards, you can put your second house, or your, your ADU and the accessory structures. Um, that, that broad flexibility starts to show up there in our, ret- even if you wanna do residential in live-work. Front lot line coverage limit, forty percent. Notice the difference between the store and then forty percent. Houses don't dominate lots, they can, but we want at least forty percent. So if you want an eighty percent, sure, but we don't want, uh, want isn't the correct term. I should say the, the code doesn't permit, say, twenty percent, which would steer you towards these big, broad, open yards, which kinda gets out of the view in the, um, character of a lot of the live-work zone parts of town. Um, occupation to corner, not required. Okay, so I can keep my house back from the road and that traffic noise. Um, front build-two zone, ten to twenty-five feet. Notice it's a house, these standards are pushing us further back, because in my house, I probably want a little bit of privacy. Um, corner build-two zone, ten to twenty. So again, you are, your house couldn't be built right at the corner like the store, which makes sense. Most people wouldn't want that, I would imagine. Right-of-way encroachment, nope. You know, you're, you're a house, y- you got nothing permitted near the road, just keep it out of there. Um, and then your side and rear setback, five and ten feet. Those are pretty close to our single-family zoning. Our single-family goes to twenty-five, I think, in the rear. Um, impervious coverage limit, fifty percent. And semi-impervious, fifteen percent. So you'll notice, it's a house, a home, you don't wanna dominate the whole thing with pavement. Or I should say, the, the code doesn't encourage it. And, um, you'll notice a little footnote there. Um, what I've done, I did a screenshot here, looking at a digital, but in your printed copies, or when you're looking at the web outside of this, you'll see your footnotes. So when you see a footnote, within residential, on the printed version, it's, it's right there in that white space. So you'll, you'll just read what it says. Um, it's not, it's usually something that just settles into it. It isn't, um, like a hard requirement, I can't, I don't know what that one says, but read it and adhere to it. It could be something as simple as, uh, like an average setback, I don't know. And then moving along, parking location, rear and side yard. So, okay, my house, I can't put my driveway in the front yard, all right? I can work with that, I got forty percent coverage, I got plenty of side yard for a driveway. Loading and service location, well, it's a house, it's not permitted, there shouldn't be a loading bay. Okay, makes sense. Um, vehicle entrance bay, that is a garage door. So now we have, in our typical residential zoning, we don't talk about garage doors. But now we're talking about a house in a form-based code. And you'll notice this says rear, side, or corner side facade. And that is to, if you want the house to match the character of our live-work areas, where you have porches and the, the houses are older, a brand-new house, which has a good chance of having a garage in the front, is really gonna be out of the character. So you can have a garage, it just can't be in front of the house, is what that steers you towards. And then the driveway, very similar, you can do it off of the alley or the corner side, or on the front if an interior lot. So if you're on a corner, the code's requiring you to put your vehicle entrance on the side road, not right up front. No such provision within the zoning code existed, um, before this. So you could see the, um, someone could build a driveway right across a row of houses with no driveway, and sure, but it really throws off the character and, and everything else around it. So going on to two height, minimum height, one story, um, two-story in the D three. So you'll notice, again, that flexibility of D three. If it's talking about D three, that means I could even put a house in D three. But notice it's saying, hey, you want a house downtown, great, but it's gotta be at least two-story. That, um, Low Slung Ranch probably is really out of character for downtown Kalamazoo. Maximum height, three stories. And you'll notice our height is in stories, not feet. Um, and all floors, nine to fourteen feet. So that means all of the floors have to be between nine and fourteen feet. And then keeping it moving along, all floors, residential lodging uses are permitted. Occupied space restrictions, not required, except for internal parking. So it's saying that the occupied space can't have internal parking. You could argue that's already covered, because you're not gonna get in the occupied space, because earlier it said I can't even put my vehicle bay door or my parking in front. So that's another example of the code, it, it's talking to itself throughout. Accessory uses and structures, again, so if I wanna put my shed or my second garage back there, I would go to there. So your garage would have some setbacks and standards, usually in the, in the, in the rear yard of the property. But I'm not doing that today, I don't care, so I can just keep moving. Facade transparency, minimum, and that's twelve percent. So it's a house, um, regulation and standards, when you get to someone's home is a, usually where someone isn't looking for, like, real specifics. So twelve percent is probably real close to whatever you need for ventilation by code. So you can have a lot of windows or twelve percent of windows. It's a house, again, you have that broad flexibility. Blank wall limitations, yes, a blank wall limitation is, is defined in there. And, um, essentially what it says is, you don't have these long run-ons of blank walls, um, where windows or doors through the spacing should be filling it. Um, usually you're not creating these big voids. Um, for an example would be a warehouse, probably doesn't have a blank space restriction, because if I'm building trinkets in my warehouse, I don't need the windows, I need the manufacturing space. And then going to the entrance, the location, front facade or building corner. Again, we want that house to look like a house, the entrance looking to the street. And, you know, per the street design manual, if it's residential, it's probably encouraging, um, sidewalks, some street trees, you know, a much more passive roadway. And then entrances on street-facing facades, you're required to have one per building. So you gotta have at least one facing the front. Your entrance treatment, that goes you back to that section, which is just before this one in the code. And it gives you your transparency and door location on the front facade. And this tells you, you can do the stoop one or the porch one. And a, a little bit of a nuance, you'll notice our transparency is specific in this one. But the last one said per entrance treatment. So the entrance treatment, remember I said, talks about how much, um, transparency window coverage you can have. So in this one, I don't need to know my transparency, I don't need to go back there. But where I put that entrance, that's where I gotta, that's where I get the final detail up there. Other facade entrances, not required, but go ahead. And, um, lastly, the roof types, tower or spire, residential, single-family home, um, not permitted in either one. So that turret that goes beyond three stories, isn't gonna happen. You could do a two-story, and your turret goes to the third story. So just that different, you see how you get different options depending on what you do. And in theory, if I'm zoned live-work one, I could do exactly what I said in the last one, and I can do this one. And there's a lot in between. And again, here is, um, from that particular- And again, here is, um, from that particular yard detached, the overview with the numbers with each thing that we were talking about. So if you can't make out the definition, you've got that as you go through. I think, um, the first few times you do it, you know, um, slow and steady is the key. And then if someone who's worked from it a lot, um, it becomes pretty secondhand. And I, I noticed that with some of our people who have encountered it. Um, by the second project, um, there's a lot less questions before they're, they're ready to, to apply. And again, there is that other, uh, image filling out the rest from that category on that page. I just wanted to highlight that and the, uh, the zoning of the property itself. Um, and then to, going back to those directions in the front. So I'll pause again there if there's any questions. So through there with each project, I would have that. Um, I could go back to, this is what my table would look like on, on the right for the residential house. I could draw up a sketch and I've got my parameters. But on that same page, you'll see, hey, wait, what if I'm not a form-based code? Well, you just go to the next section and it says dimensional standards by district. So everything else, your directions say, these are the standards for non-form-based code districts. Standards are, in these districts are listed in this table. All zoning standards, regardless of which zoning applies to your property, are defined in 50.5 dash two to five. So that's where then you go to, this is the table after the chapter four-one and chapter five. And this looks just like the rest of the zoning that exists in Appendix A. You have the different lot types. You'll notice this, this one's still very small because all of our typical zones are still sitting over in Appendix A. But now we've got a whole table just to fill it in. And this again, it, it isn't an exact copy, but it talks about your minimum lot area. So you need a lot of a certain size. I will point out, that does not apply in our form-based standards. You know, whether you want to put 16 units or one unit on a small lot doesn't make a difference. But if the market and the property can value, get that yield, there's a lot more things besides zoning that takes putting 16 people on one parcel. But if you can, you're not running into a figure in a table is, is kind of the attempt there. So this will have your setbacks, your corner-side setbacks, multiple principal buildings. So it's got, it's a mix of the current one and that. But this one's pretty simple. You go through, you're able to get your setbacks. Um, it tells you where your vehicle entrance base can be and where your access can be. So these existed and exist in Appendix A. But your parking location, your, um, vehicle entrance bays, those were development standards somewhere else. Where at this table, you don't have to go looking somewhere else to know, you don't have to find out three steps later, you can't pave more than 40% of your yard. It's going to be specific to what you're doing. And that cold, hard requirement before applied. It didn't matter if you were a store or a house. I think it was 30%. You can imagine the issues you run into trying to put a like coverage standard across all those uses and front yards. And it turns into a lot of, hmm, hmm, I can't make this lineup with the code. And then keeping that, you know, moving forward, um, here as well is the, uh, rest of them in Appendix A. You can see the similarity at setbacks, building height, all of that. And then the, um, dimension. So that, this is a slide to highlight our existing Appendix A table to the 50, very like. So you're not really reinventing the wheel. You got a different-looking ordinances about where it is. And you're going to be working with a plot plan very similar to that. And again, going back to, this is a known quantity in the city. Um, this is something staff, um, and, and to be fair, staff recognizes the learning curve with it. If we get a new developer that hasn't encountered form-based code or form-based code in the city, um, you know, we're able to sit and we have set meetings or just our availability to talk about it. Um, so here we've got the, the Mount Zion project you may have heard about. That's in the live-work zone in the upper left there. And you see the door, the windows, the entrance. Notice your higher transparency on the bottom and that's going to be facing Burdick Street. Um, and the building runs a lot along Frank Street. You could easily see in most contemporary development how that side just kind of becomes ignored. So with form-based code, it's four sides. Now we've got, even though the building doesn't face Burdick, it's going to complement Burdick really well. The one to the right there is, um, on the top is the Barrio on East Michigan is what that opened up. A, a restaurant was a former bank space. An example, that one, there was a large garage door with a vehicle approach. Um, the former code would have been really silent on that there. Someone could have kept using it. Um, but because, uh, they were proposing it anyways, but now they were able to design a building at 70% transparency up top. Now they've taken a building that didn't meet the form standards and isn't our strictest form-based standard in D1. And we've got a building in the Haymarket District active and it, it matches. At least I think so. And then on the bottom there is Zone 32, the recent, um, mixed-use development project up at Pitcher in Frank Street that recently opened. And that has a, a mixed-use building on the corner. But you go up Pitcher, which is also a live-work zone. And you can see you've got this eight-unit building and all the doors, the windows are all facing the street. And the longer building, the more doors. And each of these had those accompanying tables by different firms, I may add, that were able to navigate it. And this is, this is the end product at the end of it. Where before, if you think of our, um, Downtown Design Review Committee or the South Town Review, you had these, um, advisory documents which recommended and could a little bit things where this is, you skip that whole step and once you lay it out, it kind of sets it up for you. And it, it's working. People are able to do what they want to do. So it, um, in a unscientific study, I say, I find in your general zoning calls, I'm saying yes more than I used to when someone has a, an approximate idea. And to wrap it all up, all this form-based code, all these steps, all these different lot types, what, why did you do all of this, Staff? What's, what's going on here? So I went back to our 2025 Imagine Kalamazoo and I thought I would just read these off of. In 2017, where are we at in 2024? Align zoning ordinance against the future land use development framework. Did that. Review zoning ordinance for areas of obsolescence, including in district mapping, uses, and review of approval processes. That's where our site plan review was updated. We, um, expanded our, our project review. Um, and even removing the design review criteria, it's kind of baked into there. So we've taken our best approach and I, I believe we've, we've checked that box. Um, determine barriers to infill development throughout the city. Review lot sizes, building restrictions, standards, and coverage. There was work where we looked at our residential density standards. A lot of research over the years as these form-based codes were developed. And even as they were implemented, keeping track of the little things, the little glitches, we found that, oh, hey, this created an issue. It wasn't seen and, you know, we've been able to do that. So we've done that. Um, divine neighborhood and commercial node types to define the desired development patterns for walkability and activity. Again, we go back to that, well, why do I got to put the door up front? Why do the windows matter there? And why do I have to put my building so close for the road? Oh, well, you know, our master plan and community feedback, that's one of the rich characteristics and the code can help enhance that. Um, use form-based code to determine the appropriate mix of buildings and types that would preserve the neighborhood patterns, fa- foster walkable urban development in the nodes and downtown and meet the very needs of the city. I think the whole presentation demonstrated that that is now much more likely in our current standards. Um, update zoning districts to support the complete streets and the city's attainable housing strategy. Again, it, it's linked up, the street design manual and the complete streets at all is attempting to talk to each other. And then revise the land use table to reflect the future land use development framework for a simpler and more flexible. So that, someone may say, that's a lot of steps that isn't simpler. But I would argue it's, it's just more steps. It isn't more complex and it is certainly more flexible. So the, the why, why did we decide to implement this type of code? And in the planning, form-based code is, um, it's found to be a good solution for a lot of communities. Euclidean zoning was a, a broad stroke across a bunch of different types of communities. And, um, that's where that's at. So that's the, the background. And I, I hope that that's beneficial and helpful if you want to navigate it. And if there's any questions on any of that, um, be glad to answer them.
Great, thank you for all that, Bobby. It's great explanation. Any questions? You know, I think just to add to that, it seems like a lot more steps, but in essence, it's replacing a lot of what was there before, but was done in a very subjective, um, process by committee. And which was, um, unknown. And as the, as an applicant or a developer would come in, they don't know what the result's going to be. There's, it's ambiguous. It was up to a committee and, um, it could go one way, it could go another way. This is much more prescriptive. It's very clear. It may look like more steps, but it's about the same and you know going in, this is what I got to do. And so, um, these are the guardrails. You're right, it's flexible. But these are the guardrails I got to fit within. And so as a, as a developer, it's, um, it's much more clear and objective instead of subjective, which is, uh, which is a good thing. The question I was going to ask is you said there's some people that have gone through this a couple of times. Have they provided any feedback to you, uh, about the new standards? I know it's, it has been five years, but it's, it's kind of been a challenging or a unique five years.
Yeah. That, that's a good question. See, none, none really stand out. And I tend to think, um, you, you tend to remember the ones that stand out. But there is certainly, I've had architects never or designers never encounter it. There's, um, sometimes a little bit of a shock or whoa, wait, what am I, uh, supposed to do here? And that's where usually that, do exactly what that page says and just give it a shot, you know, or I'll walk them through with it. Um, I find it tends to be the first time I'm encountering it with somebody, but the questions tend to go down after that. Um, so it, it seems to be, to be working. I'm not finding throughout the project, it's the form-based thing that's really making them scratch their head. I mean, there's lots of things in any development. It, I'm not seeing a barrier being created. I, I simply can't navigate this. Or, hey, this standard is making my project not work. So.
Awesome. Good. Anything else? No? All right, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Very helpful.
Um, and then from there, Planner Anderson has, wants to provide an update on, uh, upcoming Imagine Kalamazoo next steps, so.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. No slides tonight. Um, I just wanted to have the opportunity to talk a little bit about Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. Uh, many of you, uh, were not on this board when we did Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, uh, which started back in 2015, uh, with the master plan being approved in October of 2017. So quickly, master plans, it's required. State requires us to have a master plan because we have a zoning code. Master plan sets the vision. Zoning code, at least as it relates to land use and transportation, helps establish that vision through implementation. It's a 10-year document. Uh, you can check in at five years and say, eh, still good, not good, right? Um, we chose at five years to continue with Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. We have been actively working through the document and the Imagine Kalamazoo work chapter at the end. And, um, gosh, I just lost a number. But I think we have, I'll lowball it a little bit. I believe we have over 75% of the action items in the master plan that are either done or, uh, on their way to being done. And a lot of what's left in there, we're going to have to make some decisions on. Is this still a community priority? Why weren't we able to get it done? What does that look like? Did we miss some steps? We weren't able to get there. So, um, Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 will kick off this summer and into fall. Um, like Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, the conversation that we have with the community is going to be equally or more important than the actual document itself. What that means is that we're going to take our time to have these conversations. Um, we, uh, engage the community for about 16 months, uh, with the current master plan. We expect something similar to that. That does not mean that we're throwing out what we have right now. Um, I think that at this point, uh, we are building on the strategic vision goals. Those are our starting place. Are these all still relevant? What do we need to add? How do we need to adjust these to look at Kalamazoo for the next 10 years? We will follow a relatively similar, uh, engagement process for Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. We'll start broad, again, starting from where we are today, not where, you know, from scratch or where we were 10 years ago. Um, spend some time, uh, doing as much outreach as we can, reaching as many people as we can, uh, using our working groups, going to talk to existing businesses, communities, boards, uh, asking really high-level questions. From there, we'll take all that information, spend some time reviewing it. Who did we not hear from? What was missing? You know, do we need to repeat anything? Are we good to move on? How do we start to collapse what we heard into more, you know, bite-sized chunks? Second phase will be going through those bite-sized chunks, right? Where do our priorities start to fall? What is more important here? Where do we need to work on first? How do we start to take what we heard from the community and start to make it into goals or values to guide our city staff's work? We'll take another pause. Did we hear from everybody? Who's not at the table? What do we need to do differently? Uh, and then move on to kind of the most, um, micro-level or refined level is, okay, what does all this mean? You know, in our neighborhoods at the block level, right? So when we have broad goals like environmental responsibility, you know, how does that actually translate, uh, at, um, a, um, human scale or an implementable scale? Because at the end of the day, we're not just creating, you know, a broad, high-level document. That's a strategic vision. The master plan is meant to be implemented. It's meant to focus on land use and transportation primarily and it's meant to be used. And so, you know, that last phase will be taking it down into an actionable set of, um, goals and action steps for staff. We hope to have the document, uh, in front of this body, probably, uh, first quarter of '26. But again, if the community, if the conversation needs a little more time with the community, then we will absolutely do that. Technically, our deadline is October of '27 because that would be 10 years from, uh, when the last master plan was complete. We hope to have it done well before that. But, you know, technically, if we're talking about firm deadlines, that's a firm deadline. You'll be hearing a lot more about this, um, as we get closer to firming up, meeting dates, plans for engagement and all of those kind of details. We're kind of still in the, um, uh, the phase where we have lots of things in front of us and we're working on scheduling and moving forward. So more to come this summer. Uh, but I wanted to kind of give you the preview because this board, the Plan Commission, is the board that is charged, uh, with adopting the master plan. You guys are the keeper of the master plan. We do send it to the City Commission for their, uh, you know, their acceptance. But according to the state, it's actually this board that does the approval. So you are the keepers of the document. So it's pretty important that you all are involved and understand, uh, the process, participate in the process, um, and keep, you know, your ear to the ground for what the community is telling us and how the plan gets shaped. So, uh, lots more to come. So, uh, lots more to come. Just wanted to give you a bit of a preview now. And so I'm gonna turn it back over to Bobby. We have two items. Again, these were transferred from what would have been our annual meeting, um, last month, uh, that we had to reschedule due to quorum. And so Bobby will lead you through the site plan review authorization that you grant staff, as well as, um, the, uh, discussion amongst the board and ultimately recommendation to the mayor and the City Commission for, uh, to fill our empty chairs that we have up here, um, next to you all.
All right. Do you want me to move right on to the next one there, Mr. Milliken? All right. The annual vote to delegate the site plan review to the Site Plan Review Committee. As a brief background, one of the tasks of a planning commission, similar to the master plan, is to perform site plan review. The zoning ordinance, um, does outline their responsibility to the Planning Commission, but there's also, um, language that the Planning Commission may delegate that authority to the Site Plan Review Committee. And as a brief reminder, um, the Site Plan Review Committee is all, you know, in, the Site Plan Review includes the Site Plan Review and, you know, a lot of the, the technical engineering review that typically, um, is done with, um, site planned by public bodies. So that is made up of, that is administered now by Emily Shemansky, who's the planner in our office. So that's the planner that leads it. And, um, another person in the Planning Division is the zoning administrator. Pete Eldridge is one of the reviewers. And then it is a multi-department, multi-division group. Um, public safety, the fire marshal is on there. And then from public services, your engineering and environmental, there's an environmental reviewer. Engineers for sanitary, um, your wastewater that goes to the plant on Harrison. Water, your drinking water, stormwater, that where you're the rain that falls from the sky, where does it rush and not get to the river? And a traffic engineer and an environmental programs manager, someone that reviews for. So every site plan goes through a pre-site plan and full site plan review. Um, a lot of the minutia is outlined in, in the policy. But then that committee, um, once everyone approves it, the site plan is then approved. So that, that review body approves each site plan and the way that that's administered is you need the unanimous. It's a very code. There's a lot of planning code review in it, which, um, the planning does. Um, but then also those other disciplines that are involved in any commercial project are part of it as well. And typically, the way that we manage it, there's no permits or construction approvals before site plan. So that is also even beyond the Planning Commission review, that when someone is ready to start a project, you can think of all the disciplines and parts of the city that need to make sure you're, you're putting an arena where. So that's, that's how that's covered. So that has been going on. Um, you have the site plan list for current. You have the site plan information from the, um, annual, um, report to show the numbers and if there's any projects or questions on that, but staff recommends that that be delegated, um, annually again to the Site Plan Review Committee.
Great. Thank you. Uh, are there any questions on this? This hap, this is an annual thing. We have the, uh, ability to do. We have done this the last many years. It encourages, uh, efficiency and takes that authority to those that have the expertise to review those technical details, I believe. So any questions on that? Now, I think a, a voice vote is probably sufficient for this. Would you agree?
Agreed.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve the delegation of Site Plan Review to the Site Plan Review Committee?
Motion to approve.
All right. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by Chambers. Any discussion on the motion? No? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good.
Thank you. Um, and I, I'd like to give a shout out. The Site Plan Review Committee does great work. Moving on, um, recommendation for interview candidate committee, from the interview committee of candidates to fill the vacant commissioner positions. Um, I'll give a brief background and I'll ask, um, beyond that, Commissioner Curtis or Chambers, um, two members of the committee. Christine D'Senzo, um, was also on the committee, but she is, uh, absent today. Um, we interviewed seven total people applied and we interviewed four. And the, the three individuals that were, um, selected to move forward are Wendell Tolber. He's from the, um, Winchell Neighborhood. His background's in project management consulting, a master's in business administration. Um, he's a recent resident of Kalamazoo from Columbus, Ohio, and has a lifelong and a, a personal, like, one of his commitments is giving back to the places that he lives and has a history of that. Um, Ian Smith, uh, from the Vine Neighborhood. He's a, a program manager for, um, Open Roads. He is a commuter by bicycle in the community and we know our multimodal transportation. We thought that would be a, a good perspective. Interesting, he's, he is, uh, an interest in planning and transportation. He has a bachelor's degree, I believe is a pretty recent graduate from Western Michigan. And then, um, Michelle Odette Baumann, uh, resident of the Winchell Neighborhood. Is, um, Michelle is a development manager at Hollander Development, which is a, a local developer. Project may, people may recognize is the creamery at Lake Street and Portage. That was the Hollander Development. Michelle has a master's degree in regional planning and, uh, a, a regional planning and a column, uh, undergraduate degree from Kalamazoo College. I believe the master's was from North Carolina. I didn't put it in the letter. And experience in planning and economic development throughout, um, her career. So there's, that's a brief outline of the three. Um, those are the three that the committee selected to move forward. I was with that committee and, uh, we'll then leave it to Michelle and the rest of the committee to vote or any discussion they have on it.
So yeah, to echo what Bobby said, we, uh, interviewed four candidates. Uh, I would have been personally happy with any of the four joining the board and that would seem to be echoed by the sentiments of the other review members. Um, definitely good candidates. Um, very happy with the three we selected and, uh, we hope that the fourth candidate would apply with future openings going forward. Yet we think we have a pretty diverse, uh, background of neighborhoods and, uh, races and ethnicities represented in the candidates going in. And I think they will make great additions to the Planning Commission.
And I would just second Commissioner Curtis. I would say the same thing. They all are really, really good. It was a hard decision to make once we got down, cause it's like we all pretty much want everybody and all of our numbers were about the same, the way we rated. So I'm very excited for the ones to come forth that we submit to the mayor, cause they all are really good.
Okay. Well, thank you both and, uh, Commissioner D'Senzo as well for doing that. It's not an easy job. Done it several times, so I appreciate you guys stepping up and doing it this time. Thank you, Bobby, for helping organize that. Uh, and I'm very excited to get some, uh, members here and get a full dais. So, um, is there anything else? Any other questions? If not, we make a recommendation to the mayor, correct?
Correct.
So can I get a motion to recommend, um, well, I'll just say the three, um, applicants, from the interview committee to the mayor to fill our vacant planning commissioner positions?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Curtis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chambers. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. That was my part I was looking the most forward to tonight. Great work, everybody. Thank you. Okay. City Planner Report. Anything further? Oh, excellent.
I just have, yeah. I'll come over and stand by it. Um, okay. I just have a couple things. First, um, May is Bike Month and hopefully I'm not stealing Commissioner Prado's thunder, uh, if he's gonna talk about this as a topic, um, but May is Bike Month. Um, we do know that we, um, you all know that our transportation focus is multimodal and so making sure that everybody has the opportunity to travel within the city of Kalamazoo in a safe and comfortable way. Um, and that means by, uh, rolling, walking, um, driving, transit, whatever it may be. We wanna make sure that, uh, we have, uh, facilities that make you feel comfortable and safe to travel around the community, whether you are eight to 80, uh, whether you, uh, are, um, have a disability. We wanna make sure that we're thinking about all aspects and so promoting Bike Week is part of that. There's a lot of activities, both that the city is supporting and, um, um, actively organizing as well as those that are county-wide. Uh, um, By Bike Friendly Kalamazoo is a county-wide organization. I wanna talk about a couple things and I'm sure I'm gonna leave a lot out, so go ahead and, um, you know, uh, you can Google all of this information. But, um, on May 11th, that's a week from this, Saturday, we have the Bike Show and that is a city-organized event. Uh, Community Pla, Planner Nolan Bergstrom, uh, this will be the second year that this activity's been organized. Takes place right here in Bronson Park. It has a lot to do with, um, people coming down, talking about bikes, showing off their bikes. Um, there's a lot of education, opportunity, uh, for games, youth activities, um, and all-around transportation discussions. Um, so that is, uh, May 11th here in Bronson Park. There are, um, a group of dedicated, uh, business owners and, um, residents in the community that have organized the Kalamazoo Commuter Challenge. Um, I, sorry, I don't have the website open, uh, but you can Google Kalamazoo Commuter Challenge, um, and get all the information. Uh, this will be occurring from May 17th, uh, through the end of the month. Uh, and it is a call, a challenge to everyone in the community to think about transitioning as many of their, of your travel trips, however you know, make them now, uh, transitioning as many as you are able to, to be by bike. Um, we are tracking those, they are tracking those rides through, um, an app called Love to Ride. Love to Ride is something that the city did help, um, support. It will provide us ridership data from March of this year to March of next year. It will tell us where people are riding. Um, it has the opportunity for riders to tell us whether the route was good or bad. Um, it, uh, integrates with Strava. If you're a Strava user, um, those two programs talk. So again, um, during the Kalamazoo Commuter Challenge, you can use Love to Ride, uh, to track, uh, your trips on bike. But if you use it year-round, it's gonna give the city lots of data that will help inform, uh, our conversations for the non-motorized plan for, uh, Imagine Kalamazoo 2035, as well as our facility, bicycle facility work moving forward. If you come downtown on May 11th, there's a lot of other activities going on in downtown, but there is an engagement opportunity that I wanted to point out. We are doing, um, a lot of downtown placemaking engagement. And so that is looking at key areas in downtown, such as the block in front of State Theater that we often close for, uh, to close the street and have, um, activities out there. Um, we are looking at the North Mall, uh, up north of Michigan Avenue that is currently, uh, remains as a closed, except for pedestrian area, um, looking at, figuring out how we can activate that space. We are also looking at areas like the pathways behind Michigan Avenue that lead you down Exchange Alley, uh, over to Farmer's Alley, over to Bates Alley, and how we can improve these spaces, uh, make them, uh, feel more comfortable, um, liven them up with public art. Uh, and there will be a table at the Bike Show, uh, that is going to, uh, be collecting input, uh, showing off some plans. We've gotten a lot of grants, uh, from, uh, different organizations to help implement this work. And so looking for some final engagement on some of those plans. Last thing, been talking about forever and I keep saying it's coming. It's actually really coming now. We are going to start the discussion for updating the residential zoning code. This is kind of the last big piece. Bobby talked a lot about zoning earlier. We have been slowly updating our zoning code, uh, since, uh, Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 and the master plan. Bobby noted the actual, you know, task as the master plan put it out to us, which is to update the zoning code in these ways. Residential plays a big part on that. I hope in June to bring a presentation to you to help set the stage for this discussion. We're gonna talk about the number of lots in the city that this is gonna impact and if we thought commercial was big, this is nine times as big, uh, in terms of number of lots. You know, the vast majority of our city is zoned residential. So a lot of discussions will be happening related to this. So I'll be bringing as much data as I can, uh, before you in June and we'll consider that our first touch point. We won't be doing any engagement until summer, but I wanna get us, uh, thinking about it and kicking off that process because it's gonna be, um, a lot of discussion and a lot of thought on how we update our zoning code to meet Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, but also to meet the housing needs that we know we have in the community from the county data as well as from, um, we've done a target market analysis, uh, as well for housing. So we have a lot of data behind the types and size and location of units we need and now we need to think about how we, um, uh, grant permission to do that work through the zoning code. So more to come on that.
Christina, while you're, uh, in case you have to do a little digging, are, the first Thursday in July is July 4th?
Yes, I do believe we already updated that calendar. When we approved the calendar last fall, I think we recognized that and changed the date. And so I will look up what that date is, uh, for the revised meeting, but I believe we proactively made that change.
I figured as much. I just couldn't remember when we moved it to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll grab a calendar real quick and look while Bobby does the next two items.
Great. Thank you.
I think it's Monday or Tuesday. I wanna say the 8th, but we'll see. Don't expect me to have such good memory if I'm correct.
No, no, no. That's unexpected, but yeah, we can move, uh, ahead to the site plan list and our annual report.
Yep. So any, I don't know if there's any questions from the site plan list. That's the, the current list. There's been an uptick of projects, so. Yeah, that's moving along.
Good.
Uh, I saw a lot of approvals go out in the last week or two, so that's always good news. Um, and then lastly is the 2023 Annual Report of Planning Activities. If the Planning Commission desires, I'm happy to walk through it. I, I don't know if that's necessary. I can briefly go over it. So we have the list of members, the, the, the regular meetings. There were 10 meetings last year. There is a summary of the actions of the Planning Commission, only seven. Couple of special use permits, um, two in-home daycares. We had the street vacations at Eleanor and Cooley, um, for the arena. And then the text amendments and the amendment of the overlay standards of the commercial was a, a big item. You guys approved that amendment. No site plan reviews were done by the Planning Commission. As a reminder, um, there was the zone that had, uh, in the business park, they had to come to the Planning Commission previously. And there was lastly the crest, um, from CPED, Community Planning Economic Development, to review and approve the Capital Improvement Plan and that was approved as well. There is a summary of planning activities last year. Um, some items were city staff assisting applicants for NFP Planning Commission, other boards and how to navigate it. This, oh, I'm sorry, no, then there was the summary of the Public Participation Plan activities. And what that is, the city's adopted the Public Participation Plan. Um, but even beyond the Planning Commission, I wanted through the annual report to kind of go through some of the work of the other work that the Planning Department is doing. Um, our neighbor at Activator Jay Slavy is, you know, kind of the, the lead on that and they provided, uh, this background of all the activities done in recent years. So such as city staff work neighborhoods on using the PPP for their outreach. So during some Planning Commission actions, the applicants would have to go to our Public Participation Plan, which is applicant-driven engagement. As you know, there are state-required notices we have to do and that is one to, um, not only for applicants to use, but internal that city staff, we, we try to use it. That was a, a nice summary put together. Um, and then, um, other activities, I have the, um, number of site plans reviewed last year and a couple of the bigger projects approved by the committee. And then, um, a lot of the zoning administrative work, then our number of sign permits, paving permits, the number of building permits reviewed, the number of historic permits reviewed. And you see some significant numbers here where a lot of the work and the ordinance is that this body approves, you know, that day-to-day these reviews are going on. So I highlighted the zoning administration, some of the, um, inspections related to, uh, the compliance with the marijuana facilities, um, brownfield plans and all of that. And lastly, we're, um, the Planning Division manages the NEZ process. There was an updated policy and, um, adopted and, uh, a new NEZ district created just to, uh, the north of us here on Rose Street. And lastly, were the actual neighborhood engagement activities. Um, Jay and Nolan do a lot of that on-the-ground engagement and the number of projects done. For example, of those plans, there's project in them. 58 were completed in 2023 and more specifics of that work are outlined. I'd be glad to talk about anything in this list or any more details the Planning Commission would like to know.
Well, seeing nothing, is there an approval needed for this or is this just for our acceptance?
That's a good question. I, I suppose a voice vote wouldn't hurt anything.
Voice vote. All right. Can I get a motion to accept the 2023 Annual Report?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Patelco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Swan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Well, thank you for doing that. Thanks for putting that together. It was a good year. Okay. Uh, we will move now to public comments. These are public comments on non-agenda items. We'll ask that anyone wanting to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward. Um, put your name on the pad and, as well as speak your name and address so that we can get that into the minutes. And so while people are queuing up for that, if you're watching online, you can also call in and that call-in number is 888-382-9556 and we will take your call, uh, after the folks here in the audience. So, uh, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sandra Bloomfield, 2304 West Glen Eagle. First off, I wanna thank these folks from the Planning Commission or from the zoning and administration here for the great presentation they did. I have been through some of those classes and they are not easy. I have been through some of those classes and they are not easy to pass, so thank you for that. I want to talk about something tonight that nobody wants to talk about, and it is the pod community. It is the concerns that some of us have for the pods. So as we go through this, you're also each getting a copy of this, I do want to read this so it is on public record. First off, are we protecting the health and safety of the public with an ordinance when we place housing in residential and commercial areas with pods? Two, contaminated ground, diesel tanks are underground. Think of the diesel tanks under the ground, okay, wherever you want to put these folks. My feeling about these folks and contaminated land is they're already facing challenges. Why do we want to give them more challenges? Okay? The parameters for contaminated land to house people, what are the guidelines from Ingle, from the state? How many of us would live on contaminated land? And has the usage of the proposed site at 2015 Lake been researched as far as the contamination? The property is in a high-density commercial district, three sides of this property at 2015 Lake are high-traffic areas, okay? We have King's Highway on one side, we have the Business Loop, which is the entrance to our city, and the other one is Lake Street. We have a lot of semi trucks that go through there. 600 pound, 1,000 pounds to 180,000 pounds are loaded semis. These are semis that are coming from the asphalt plant. That asphalt plant runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, from spring till late fall. And I have seen semis lined up there two weeks ago where the traffic can't move because there were so many semis. And that is where I'm thinking the proposed entrance is for the pods. So I'm thinking that a traffic study should be done before anything further moves forward there with that. Arcadia Creek is located directly behind 2015 Lake. I have seen that area flooded in the past, and if those pods are placed on flat land, I don't know what would happen there with the water issue. And also, the Kalamazoo River is very close to that. Emergency housing or emergency evacuation, in the event of a chemical spill, fire, severe weather watch, what are the procedures for sheltering these people and where are we going to move them for safety? If disaster happens, what is the plan for housed, their pets and their belongings? Where will you move them and who will fund the emergency housing? Housing pods, your ordinance is 10 feet apart. Or I don't know what the pods are made of, whether or not they're fire-rated, I have a concern about that. Which?
Commissioners, thank you for letting me have a chance to speak. I'm going to continue on with what Sandy was talking about. There's so many questions that the Planning Commission really needs to answer before they can say that we want to put these pods here. And some of those is, have you considered how much it's going to cost to support this facility? Right now, it's been estimated from $1 to $2 million to support this facility. That's $20,000 to $40,000 per pod for 50 pods. That's a lot of money to support one pod, when you could support a whole family for basically just about that same amount of money. So do you really want to invest that kind of funds into a pod? The other thing is, is the, have you approved the funds in order to support this facility, such as EMS, such as healthcare and so on and so forth, transportation? Who's going to monitor the drug use in this facility? It's in between two schools. You're putting people in there that are homeless, that have a general propensity to become drug users or have been drug users, and that's part of the reason why they're homeless. Who's going to pick up the drug paraphernalia that's on the sidewalk that these children are going to be, you know, put in front of? Emergency service is going to be tracked. Is there a curfew? What about quiet times in the area for that neighborhood? These are all considerations that need to be taken for that Edison neighborhood. Daily activities, who's coming and going? Is there mental health services going to be provided in the facility or are they going to have to transport them to the mental health facilities? Trash removal, snow removal, weapons, are they going to be checked for weapons? Are they going to be able to have weapons inside the facility? Are they going to be able to take them in and out? What about if a tenant happens to be removed from that facility? Who's going to clean the pod? Who's responsible for those types of things? Why are you placing the homeless pods so far away from the facility, such as the hospitals, the, the grocery stores, transportation? There's only one bus route that goes by there at this particular point in time. So basically, with all of those questions not answered, you really need to get those answered before you consider putting them in there. So what happens if, if it doesn't work out? What's the plan to shut the facility down? Have you checked at other facilities to see, have they been productive? Have they worked? What is the best plan to get them work? Put a pod in an individual's home that's saying, I will take responsibility for this person and we will help rehabilitate this person. There's a lot of different ways. Basically, it boils down to the Edison neighborhood is not the right location for this. You've got the contamination, you've got the Expo Center there. Are you going to be impacting that facility? That's a large revenue base for Kalamazoo.
Thanks for listening to us. I'm 1027 Schuster. I'd just like to wrap it up with emphasizing that if you can please review these questions and actually do the research and look at Reno, Nevada, they're, the one they push as, how good it is, and other pod communities, and what has gone wrong with the community and the neighborhoods afterwards. I just urge you to please do the research yourselves and not listen to the pipe dream that HRI is selling. I mean, you don't have to listen to me, you don't have to listen to them, just please do the research and realize the impact it'll have on our community. That's pretty much all I got. Thank you.
I was wondering, is any of you, have any of you people ever visited a place that's had these pods before? And when we found out they was looking at putting these pods there, and they was copying Reno, Nevada, because they got pods, me and my wife jumped on an airplane and we went to Reno, Nevada to see exactly what was coming to our area. And it was unbelievable. You guys are, the city's looking at sticking this on a one or two acre lot, 50 pods. Reno, the one they're copying, they did that. That happens to be 16 acres, $100 million, and it's destroyed the community. It's really something you have to see with your own eyes. We are hoping that you guys take a very, very serious look at this. And if you looked at it and then took the people I heard talking earlier and look at a map of Kalamazoo and figure out a location that would work for that, I understand it probably has to go somewhere, but if we're going to take and destroy the Edison neighborhood on a two-acre piece of ground, and that's not nowhere near enough people to take care of our community, what's the next neighborhood you're going to destroy with your next 50 pods or your next, whatever that may be? So I'm just asking you to take a real close look at it before you make your decisions. Thank you very much for giving me time.
My name is Sabrina Pritchett-Evans, and I would actually strongly encourage you all to take a trip to Reno, to just see for yourself, is it what we think it's going to be here in Kalamazoo? Or are we bringing something to our community that will not be healthy for our community? I think that would be easy to do, and then take pictures and bring it back to us. I'm truly concerned about the safety of the children that are not too far from there. And it's not the pod, the people who will live in those pods that I'm concerned with, I'm concerned with who gets attracted there. Because what happens is people with mental issues, with drug habits, they attract other people that they think that they're friends and they're not. I call them vultures. They come on payday for one purpose and one purpose only. And so not far from there, we have schools and we have children who are already living sometimes in conditions that are questionable. They're dealing with issues on a day-to-day basis that most of us couldn't fathom. And now here we are introducing something else to them that could disrupt their life. So please, please reconsider that, and then hopefully this doesn't happen because it's too far to the highway. And if any one of them get out there and they're disoriented, that would be a tragedy. And who would be responsible for that? Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I just wanted to add to it. The neighborhood that you guys are incorporating, or that is trying to be cited as a use for this future pod community. It not only borders the Edison neighborhood, but it also borders the Lakewood community. We have a very diverse community down there. We are also a very lower-income neighborhood, as are a lot of neighborhoods, to be honest, in Kalamazoo. You know, there, there's a lot of safety things I think that people have concerns with. I personally want to know what kind of research was done in selecting sites because why are we not? There's been two other sites that have been denied for suitability purposes, but we are building newer buildings on those lands, and so I'm, I'm a little confused with the land use in terms of, is it safe or is it not safe? Because to me, if it's safe to put a building, playground, whatever on, then we should be able to make it suitable for, you know? But again, with the diversity of the neighborhood, we've learned to coexist between businesses and residential areas. And I feel like it's, it's not saying that people don't need help. It's not saying that, you know, it's saying we need to do more research before we just make a, for sure, this is what we're going to do, end goal. You know, I don't think there was a lot of research done into the feasibility of it. Is this going to be sustainable? You know, I mean, if, if no taxpayer dollars are being used and you're getting your money straight from a private donor source, okay, that's great, well, you get your donations and so forth. But I don't foresee with the budget that they're projecting that that just comes from private donor sources. Because anything that comes from a local, state, or federal authority is going to be And I mean, we all live in Kalamazoo County, so we all pay the housing for county, or housing for all county tax as well, on our property taxes. So I'm just, like I said, there's more, there's not been enough community engagement in this to kind of get community feedback, see how things are. Because I don't think anybody has come down in that area. It borders the township and the city, but we're all encompassed in the county. And I don't think anybody has actually done the footwork to see how things operate, how things work. I mean, we've got railroad tracks that run.
Any, okay, do we have any call-in comments?
Caller ending in, oh, hold on. Caller, you're on with the Planning Commission?
Hello, good evening, how are you all doing today? I hope you're doing well. So my name is Pastor Ruben Osorio Sanders. I pastor the church that's here on the corner of Rans and Burdick in Kalamazoo, we're about 70-member congregation. And I'm calling yesterday, I'm also filing a claim through the, the agency to handle the claims against the city. I would really just like someone from the city to take the time to come to our building and speak with us. Our building is inaccessible from the front and back, and it has been a roller coaster since the day that everything began. There's times where contractors doing work left literal walking hazards, exposed piping. We've had a sewer line crushed on one end of the building. I'm calling today because guess what? Now we have a sewer line crushed on the other end. So we've had water backups, and we've dealt with everything, informing Jacqueline, I believe is her name, from the city, but never charging, you guys are sending a bill or seeking legal recourse, but it's getting a little out of hand now. We're probably $7,000 in so far, just repairing everything that gets left damaged outside. Our landscaping, at one point got totally destroyed, we had to actually hire a landscaping company to change out the entire landscape. And we've, we've had to respond to all of the negative impacts, and we have yet to have a single person from the city. I've emailed 311 many times, I've emailed the team many times. I'll get an email back a week and a half later and it'll be a very blanket statement, oh, come to the next city commission meeting. So I would really appreciate someone coming. We're about 70 members, we're all, majority of us are Kalamazoo residents. We're the only Spanish-speaking church on the north side. We represent your voters, we represent your community, and we would really appreciate it if we could get someone to come and take some time out of their day to see that things are dealing with, and then let's talk about how can we work together, maybe in a better way for the next year or two while this construction continues to impact us. In this moment, we do not have access to our own land, none of our backyard space is accessible, and the front space is also inaccessible. We have to walk through basically clay, that the sidewalk has been turned to clay because of all the destruction. And so our building, in terms of a safe way to just access it, it's not that way today. So that is what I'm bringing toward this commission today. I want to record it on record, Pastor Ruben Osorio Sanders, 603 North Burdick Street. And I would really appreciate someone from the city taking time to come and see what we're dealing with and work with us instead of just being a recipient of our complaints. And that is the purpose of my call today.
With that, we will close the public comment. Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Pradel.
Hopefully, your crew is going to grow here by three in a couple of weeks, so congratulations on that, and thank you to Commissioners Chamber, Vicenza and Curtis for your work, getting some more colleagues up there. I was just wondering, is there any chance, I can do this as well, but for Pastor who called and left, perfect. I was just hoping that somebody can give, reach out and give him a call so that we can make sure to follow up and meet with him sometime soon as well. I'm happy to help with that as well if needed. Wanted to also just note, you saw it here a little bit tonight from, from city staff, but one of the things I'm particularly really proud of, and I bring this up pretty frequently, is as late as it is in our master plan, the fact that we're still talking about doing that work and accomplishing all the things we set out to do. I'm incredibly proud of that, and I think city staff for providing some updates about our existing master plan and the exciting work we have coming up for a new one as well. Big sign of warming weather, you know what's coming this weekend? Opening day of farmers market, the Saturday, May 4th, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on 1204 Bank Street. Then also, as we get into June, we'll start having the Thursday night markets, which are from June to September, which are the third Thursday. And so please support our local farmers market and all those folks there. It's a very exciting time of year. Also, I share this, I've been trying to share this with each recent meeting as well, but the City View publication, it comes out every two months now. I hope you're getting this. We've heard pretty positive feedback on this, but it's our chance to share all the exciting things and work we're doing here in the city for, for all of our residents. Last thing, I also promised to follow up with votes that you sent to the City Commission. The last one that was something that came to you that moved on to us was at the April 15th meeting, Consent Agenda G16 was adoption of the resolution to vacate the 17 feet of West Water Street. And so that did pass as part of our consent agenda as well, but wanted to just thank you for moving that forward. I know there was one vote, no vote on that as well from the Planning Commission, but that did pass the City Commission. And then lastly, I just wanted to give the public a reminder, because we weren't sure of the voting schedule for May, we have our, our City Commission meetings in the month of May. Our meetings are usually the first and third Monday of each month, but this month, our meetings will be on May 13th and May 20th. So just kind of keep that in mind, we won't be meeting this coming Monday. With all that, I hope you all are doing well. Thanks for all that you do, and have a great evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Planning Commissioner comments? Any Planning Commissioner comments? Just, anything? No? No? All right. As is sometimes, actually, I find it quite often the case, with the public comments, I just want to apologize that we have a commission, and as a body, we have nothing to do with any of the issues that were brought forward here today. The issues that were raised are not under the purview of this commission. That being said, what we can do is provide a platform for those comments and make sure that they're on record and that they're shared with City Commission and staff as appropriate. And so I hope that by doing that, we provide some fulfillment for those, for the feedback that was provided. A reminder of the marathon this weekend, and good luck to all those participating. Did we find out the July meeting date? As much for, oh, sorry. I'll keep vamping here. Thanks to the committee for your work. It will not be a panic by Beth to figure out if we're going to have a meeting every week leading up to, all right, it's a race now to figure out who's going to find it Monday, July 9th, we think it is? Oh, Tuesday, July? Monday, July 8th appears to be the leading contender. Of course, we'll know more next month, and we'll announce it at that time. All right. Anything else? Thanks, staff, for all the good information today. With that, having exhausted the agenda, we're adjourned.